I can see it in front of me.
Uh.
Do you have that?
You have it, Ben, in front of you?
No, I do not.
All right. I will find it real quick, Bill.
I'm on the borrowed wifi in the car and it's pretty weak, so I'm having a hard time opening attachments.
Okay.
Thank you, Joanne. I appreciate it. Sorry, I don't have it.
That's all right.
Yeah, I've got it at the office, but I don't have a computer at the office does not have a video screen. Plus, it's disruptive to everybody else. So I'm at the museum today.
All right.
Maybe my best bet is to just find email that we had that had it on it. That's what I'll do. Sorry, guys. I'm just trying to find that email that had it in it. Oh, this is so ridiculous. Sorry, guys. Hang on a second. All right.
I'll just follow along. Don't worry. Don't hold up the meeting on my account.
All right. All right, guys. So we're gonna do this fairly quickly. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 10:03. Present are Bill Dowling. Yay.
Yay.
Lori Dobson.
Yay.
Yay. Becca Powell.
Yay.
Philip, Philippe Donald. Yes, here. Ben Sumner and Dennis Dever and myself, Joanne Thorman. Meeting is called to order on the agenda. We need to review the previous minutes. You should have seen them, taken a quick look. I move that we accept the minutes from the preview from June 19 as written. Do I have a second? Laura, Lori Dobson seconds. Any comments? Okay, Dennis.
Yeah, just to let you know, Bill, I just sent you that email. Hope it went.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dennis.
Okay. All those in favor, um, Bill Dow, Lori Dobson, yay. Bill Dowling, yay. Becca Powell, yes.
Yay.
Philippe Donald.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, Joanne Thorman, yes, the minutes are accepted as written. I hope you had a chance to take a look at the draft. Thank you very much for typing that up, Ben. Um, I appreciate that. On the final page, you may have noted that it went a little further than we got at the meeting, but that's okay. We'll just keep moving forward. So I did have personally, I just, I wanted to see if anyone had any comment on what was typed up so far. Any thoughts, any, anything to add to it? Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I did, I do have some typos here just real quick. And what I got in the email, this one I just sent Bill, it's the last one, it only went to section seven. That's probably intentional, but that's, that's as far as I went. And just real quick, section two, there's just a typo. It says title thirty zero tac alpha. You'll find it in there versus thirty oh tac alpha instead of thirty zero. Then on section three, the fourth bullet sentence.
Wait, can you, can you stop a second, Dennis? Because I think Ben is one that needed to hear what you just said and he was, he was doing something else. Ben, did you catch that? Ben, you're muted. I want to make sure you heard some of the typos. Yes.
Well, if, can he just send, send them to me? And I can work. If they're grammatical, you know, if they're not any change in the, the gist of what you all wanted, if you'll just send it to me and I'll, I'll clean it up from there and I appreciate.
Yeah, I think they're, they're all typos that won't have any bearing on what you wanted to, to do actually. Yeah, that, that, that's all it is. I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis, he only sent me what I sent him, which was as far as we got. And he completed that page even though we didn't finish that last page. It's on the draft you received. The goal is to finish the remaining pages today. The only question I had on the draft, and I just want to check in with you guys, is under section four applicability. That would be subsection G, where it is the exemptions, which we talked about adding the sixty feet in height on the parabolic antenna. We talked about adding the VHF. Sorry?
Subset F.
I'm under section four, four point one exemptions. And there's A, B, C, D, E, F, and G under that. And I'm just doing a quick review on some of the changes we made. We added sixty feet in height to the parabolic. We added the VHF antenna and we added subsection, section G, which reads as follows. The town of Cranberry Isles for the purposes of providing internet service. Because the beginning sentence says this local land use ordinance applies to all construction and expansion of wireless telecommunications facility except as provided below. And we wrote the town of Cranberry Isles for the purposes of providing internet service. I wonder if we should write facilities owned or used by the town of Cranberry Isles for the purposes of providing internet service. Does anyone have any thoughts on that? I just wanted to add, add the word facilities owned or used by. Does anyone have any feeling for or against or neutral? Um, Lori.
I think it would already be assumed that it would be facilities owned or used by. But the thing I was wondering is whether there should be an approval, per approval, per approval of the planning board prior to their making a decision in the selectmen's meeting about that. I just think it might need an extra layer of overview. Even though we are allowing it as an exemption.
Uh, any other thoughts?
I think that's a good idea.
So you would add per review, uh, per review.
Yeah, review and per approval and review.
Except. Except that we listed this as an exemption, so then becomes a non-exemption. It becomes needing approval. Becca.
Can we just clarify it to say existing tower for the purposes of it, you know?
The town of Cranberry, the town of Cranberry Isles existing tower for the purpose of providing internet service. Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah.
It would have to be plural because there's more than one, right?
Yep. Yes.
How do we feel about adding the clause, the town of Cranberry Isles existing towers as of this ordinance or existing towers for the purposes of providing internet service? How do we feel about that? Are we okay with that? That means any other, any other thing would have to go through the normal procedure of application. It only exempts the current towers.
Yeah, and any modifications they'd have to, I think the ordinance is clear later on to say that any, any amendments to size have to go through the review process no matter what. So this just says the existing ones are fine and that's how I would see it.
Does it say exist, aren't existing towers automatically exempted because they were preceding the ordinance?
I think they are, but I think we just wanted to make, make it clear that the existing towers were fine as is.
All right, I'm okay with that. Lori.
Any, any new additions to the towers or changes to the towers could be potentially to add, you know, parts to the towers, you know, you've seen the way that they can be added to and, and their, the visibility expanded and their potential range of effect. So I just think all of that ought to be under planning board review. And so I don't, I just don't want to provide a loophole on, on anything because then it starts sounding like we're giving special consideration and, and that raises questions itself. I just don't know if it's necessary. If we just didn't provide any exemptions, you know, when anyone new comes in, even if it's the town, I just think we're, we're better off that way. It just seems more across the board to me, but maybe it's just the language I'm not understanding.
Okay, we've covered a lot of that in section D where it says maintenance or repair. Maintenance, repair, or reconstruction of a wireless telecommunications facility and related equipment, providing there's no increase in height or any other dimension of the facility. So changes in height and all that sort of thing on existing facilities are already covered under the maintenance repair section. So are we now wondering if this clause is needed? If we're exempting existing ones for the internet, do we need that clause at all? Well, we spent quite a bit of time talking about this and being worried that the internet would, the, the existing internet system would be negatively impacted by this ordinance. So I think we need to come up with a conclusion on this promptly so we can move on. Do we need this clause? Um, Dennis, do you have a thought on that?
Um, no. Sorry. I mean, I, I think it's fine the way it is. The, I, but I, but I do agree with Lori that it probably should be clarified that the, that the planning board should at least have a recommendation on it. But it's not totally necessary, but I think either way would be fine with me. But I, I would say leave, leave that in there. Section G, that sentence G, leave it in there to exclude it, I think, either way.
Okay, I'm gonna move that we amend section G, the town of Cranberry Isles for the purposes of providing internet service per review of the planning board.
An approval?
Do I have a second for that?
You want approval on that too?
I want a second first and then we can discuss.
Well, I had a review and approval and that's what Dennis agreed with.
But, but we just, this is under the section called exemptions. And now we're saying, oh, you're not exempt. In fact, you have to go for the planning board and get approval. So that is not an exemption at all. And if, if we're gonna call this an exemption, it needs to be an exemption. And if we're gonna call it something else that it needs approval, it needs to be somewhere else in the ordinance, but not under exemptions. In my humble opinion.
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion and then I'd like to make a point.
Okay. Uh, I think Bill already seconded it.
Yep.
And so. Okay, make your point, Lori.
I think you're making it toothless that way if you just say review, because if it doesn't require an approval, then it's automatically exemption whether we review it or not. I don't know why you have it in there. I just, to me, I just think it adds, the point of adding it is to add a layer of approval to a process that may have some considerations, may have some things we might have some considerations about that we haven't thought about now, unintended consequences, we don't know down the road. So I'm just saying, I think there's nothing wrong with saying approval by us. We could strike it later if they don't like it for some reason or we don't. But for now, I think it's okay to say per review and approval, even though it, we, you know, even though it's an exemption. Um, it's still, we, I think we should approve the exemption still being exempt in that case. That makes any sense.
Well, why don't we vote on, sorry, sorry, Philippe, go ahead.
Well, it's a friendly amendment to add approval. I'm adding a friendly amendment. I think we should have approval in there anyway.
I, I withdraw my, my movement and I move that I'm gonna make a second movement that follows what Lori says per review and approval. Do I have a second? And then I'll listen to you, Philippe. Lori seconds. Philippe, go ahead.
Sorry it's taken so long. I think my thoughts are finally coalescing into something worthwhile. I think that internet service should fall under telecommunications. The section D covers the maintenance of our existing towers. The whole point of this is to have telecommunications go through this ordinance. So a future internet service that is different from the one that we have should go through this process. So I think that the section G is redundant.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Okay.
I, I also agree if I may add to that, as long as we consider that the town is also a separate service. It would be inclusive as, as a separate service. Any change to the existing service is considered a separate service going through the ordinance. I don't think it needs repeating either.
Okay, so I'm gonna withdraw my second movement. And I'm gonna move that we strike clause G. Is that basically what you're suggesting, Philippe?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna move we strike clause G as being redundant. Do I have a second? Lori seconds, now discussion. So Philippe's argument that, and I, I agree with it also, that section D covers maintenance and repair or changes it to existing facilities. And any new facilities by the town of Cranberry Isles would have to go through this process, much like anyone else. Do I understand that correctly?
It's my understanding.
Okay.
Could I ask a question to Dennis? Dennis, do you think that we need it for any reason for protection? I mean, would, would anybody be able to make the point that, that the town would not be considered a new service provider?
Um. I don't know how to answer it that way, but I think after what Philippe said that we've already covered under D, we can maintain the existing internet system without going through the planning board and all that. And if in the future, we have something different that we can't now conceive, we're gonna want to approve that. So I just, I just think just based on that, I would, I would say to strike G, that sentence G. I, I, that's, that's, that's the way I'm, I'm coalescing it, I guess.
Okay, um, Ken, so it's been moved, it's been seconded, we're gonna vote and then see where we go with that. All those in favor of striking subsection G from the draft? Do I have your vote, Philippe? Yes or no?
Yes.
Becca Powell, yes or no?
Yes.
Lori Dobson, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Bill Dowling, yes or no?
Yes.
Joanne Thorman, yes. Okay, Ben, please strike that clause. Okay, we're going to move on to where we left off and that was a lengthy discussion about height. And it was agreed that we were going to set, Lori, I believe you'd already left the meeting at that point, set the height at no more than a hundred feet. And now we are moving on to section D, which is zones and setbacks. And in the draft Ben sent you, he finished writing it up as I had written it. It's not like the original. The original says the following. D setbacks. A new or expanded wireless telecommunications facility must be setback one hundred percent of its height from the boundary of the communication antenna area. The setback may be satisfied by including areas outside the communications antenna area boundaries if secured by an easement. I had changed that in my draft to something different because we obviously don't have a communication antenna area. And this whole clause made no sense for the town of Cranberry Isles ordinance. And I proposed and we haven't discussed it yet. And we started to touch on whether we were going to make it not okay in the shoreline. And I also put that the towers shall be setback from all property lines at a minimum distance equivalent to the total height of said tower. So those were my words, not the words that we have covered at all. So we are completely open to discussion on zones and setbacks. I think my goal, just to go backwards a little bit, today, we gotta finish this. It must go to the selectman. This, there, there has not been just one inquiry about building a tower. There's been more than one. This is very important that we get this to the selectman so that it can get for pub, out for public vote, either up or down, but at least to the public, to, to the residents to vote. So zones and setbacks, do I have any, does anyone have any thoughts on this versus about the shoreline and about setbacks?
Could I ask what Dennis would recommend?
Dennis, go ahead, if you have thoughts.
Um, do I, my thoughts?
Yes.
On zones and setbacks.
Yes.
Um, I, I think, I think, I'm not sure we want to go ahead and eliminate them from the shoreline zone completely. Um, I, that's two hundred and fifty feet inland from the high tide mark or the upland edge of freshwater wetland. It's a lot of space. I think we should try to find an inland location, I think in most places before considering the shoreline zone. I don't know how you write that, but I don't know if you'd want to eliminate it completely. However, in the interest of time, we can go ahead and pass it this way and you can make a change in the future if you want to do that. The other one, the setback from property lines, I kind of agree that it would be okay to be closer to a property line than the height of the tower if there is a setback on the, or easement on the adjacent property that will bring it, bring the setback to the tower's height. However, I wouldn't have a problem with it the way it's written. It's just gives you more options in the future if you were to, to look at it that way. Because I don't think, you're, you're not gonna have a lot of luck finding probably anyone who wants to, well, I don't think you, you might have trouble finding a lot to place a tower on. It's a hundred feet tall. If it has to be at least two hundred and fifty feet square. But on the other hand, in the interest of time, I wouldn't have a problem with the way it's written. Either it's just some thought.
My, the reason I wrote about the shoreline and Philippe, I'll get to you right immediately following is because of the beginning of our ordinance when we talked about protecting scenic views and vistas. It might, it seems logical that all our shorelands are scenic views and vistas. And so it's counterintuitive to allow them in the shoreline. And I do know Swans Island prohibited them in the swan, so there's some precedent out there for not having them in the shoreline. So I would make the opposite argument in why should we have them in the shoreline as opposed to why shouldn't we? So that's why, that's why I put that in there. Philippe, go ahead.
Uh, so that would, the zones and setbacks, as it's written, would exclude our internet service as it is. So we would have to have a way to to exempt that, which I, I think we do somewhere. I'm also curious if, if we can actually do that, just flat out say you can't have a structure. Getting back to the, to, you know, we can't, we can't deny a service from being installed. We can't just flat out say you can't have cell towers. So can we actually say that we can't have them in the shoreline zone? This is getting back to one of the questions I had where in the shoreline zoning, we have a stipulation for scenic views. As far as I read, the only restriction that we have is if it's a registered scenic resource. I'm not sure that the wording.
And we don't have.
Right, so we don't, we don't have a way for the planning board to say that something will negatively affect the landscape as we see it. It's just how it's, if it's registered or not, which is something we might want to consider.
Yes, I know. It's very gray, very gray.
So, but in that, if we had that, that would allow us to control the shoreline zone without saying you can't have anything in the shoreline zone because our current site-to-site internet providers are, are all based in shoreline areas. Like having the, the setback distance would make it impossible to have the transmitter on the boatyard here on Cranberry to provide aisles for.
So you're suggesting with your commentary that because we have a one or, in our mission statement that protecting scenic views, although there are not designated scenic views, is one of our, one of our objectives that we don't need to include that wording about prohibiting the shoreline zone because we're covered in some loosely shaped form by our mission statement. Is that what you're getting at?
I, I don't think, I, I, that's what our mission statement says, but there's nowhere that we actually say yes or no based on how it impacts visual quality.
Um, Lori.
We have a standard for that.
No. Lori, go ahead.
I think, I think Philippe's right. I think we need better definition around scenic in general. You know, the pier falls under that help, items like the pier, you know, how, how we measure and consider any kind of uses of shoreline property in the future. But as Dennis said, he didn't think it would, it would be required for us at this time to explain that further. And he thinks it's, it's, if, if he feels like we can work with it as it is and go forward with it as it is, we can revise it after we address some of those issues. It's not saying that this is, this is something we can't adjust down the road, is it?
I actually, I actually think we can't adjust it unless it's gonna be adjusted at a town meeting, which I don't know when we're gonna have a town meeting because this is gonna go, is gonna leave our hands. And I wanted to leave our hands today for review by the attorney and selectman. Yes, Lori.
Follow up on that then. I would say special exceptions may be, may be addressed towards shoreline zone per approval, review and approval by the planning board. I would just add a clause and then leave it at that. And then it's not completely out of our hands.
So you would add a new or expanded wireless telecommunications facility that my wording is wrong here, or, or facility that utilizes towers that needs to be removed because I removed. Or facility that utilizes towers, Ben, needs to come out because I put that all through my draft because I thought we were gonna do a tower ordinance. So let me reread. A new or expanded wireless telecommunications facility may not be located in the shoreline zone unless, finish your wording, Lori.
Unless a specific approval given by planning board, reviewed approval without specific prior approval from the planning board, without approval from the planning board. Specific case by case approval required from the planning board.
Okay, I'm not loving any of it. Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah, um, we'll have to change the shoreline zoning ordinance if we have a section in there about the not having them in the shoreline zone or affecting it because now all areas of the shoreline zone do allow what you would call, I think they're called necessary services or whatever. Probably approval of the planning board. So we'll have to modify our shoreline zoning ordinance. My recommendation is strike that part about not having it in the shoreline zone. Get it out of there. We can deal with it later. And the other thing, there, the, the boatyard on Great Cranberry, we got a fall zone problem because that antenna is mounted on a building. Now, it can be grandfathered, but had we had that setback of the height of the tower away from buildings or property lines when we were doing the internet project, that tower couldn't be there. And it's a very good place for it. So I don't know, it's just, just something else to think about. But in the interest of time, we can change these things later. The same process. We have to go all through it again. Take it to the selectman and they would take it to town meeting, but it, you know, it can be changed and they are living, changing documents. They should be. They have to be.
Dennis, you don't agree that time is of the essence here?
I do. That's why I would like to strike out the shoreline zoning restrictions so we don't have to change the shoreline zoning ordinance. And I question whether we should have that setback thing in there or modify it. Once again, and the time is of the essence, maybe we can leave. Once again, and the time is of the essence, maybe we can leave that setback thing out and just leave it the way it is for now. But I just want to say, we couldn't have put the tower on Great Cranberry where it is if that was, uh, a rule at the time. Because it's on a building and it's in the shoreline-
Or we could put a comma-
High tide mark, actually.
Philippe?
Uh, I think, um, I agree with, uh, uh, taking it out of the shoreline zone. So we don't have to change that. Um, the setbacks would be fine if we give ourselves an accept, an exemption where the planning board, um, uh, uh, could, uh, and could exempt the setback restriction.
Okay, why don't we add a sentence then that says exactly that? Uh, so, uh, before we move, I, I, I agree about the shoreline zone. And I'd like to keep the setback, but I also like your suggestion of adding a comma that allows the planning board to, um, i- i- not exempt, but what was the word you used?
Oh, I, I think in our, in our section, uh, a- about exemptions, we should have, um, we should have something, uh, and another section that allows the planning board, um, uh, to, to make exemptions.
How about we put it in this setback exemption, uh, s- uh, a comma here? Uh, that will read towers shall be setback from all property lines at a minimum distance equivalent to the height of said tower. Planning board shall have approval to, planning board may, what is the word when you, um, override? Uh, sorry, somebody come up with some wording for me on this one, please.
Provide exception.
Uh, planning board shall have the, the, um-
Provide exception to, to, in cases of.
Okay, let's start with this. I move that we remove the shoreline zone clause of this zones and setbacks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion, Lori.
Without saying shoreline and conscious of the fact that people might decide to put it on their shoreline property or near it, uh, for whatever purpose. Um, and you know, there's, there's somebody already who has it on a building, little building facing, uh, the sh- the sh- the mainland. Um, could we say a, a certain setback from the high tide mark around the island? That wouldn't necessarily require shoreline zone involvement, would it, Dennis?
Um, if it's in the shoreline zone, it would involve shoreline zone involvement. But once again, just going back to the antenna we already have, that's all, that building is almost right at the high tide mark where the antenna is. It was the place to put it. It was the best place to put it. Um, then again, on making an exemption to a rule that you have, it's kind of like nullifying the rule in the first place. Why even have the dare strike it if you're going to have an exception to it? Let me say, if the planning board can override this rule, then why have the rule there in the first place?
But how about, could, do, can, isn't it true that sometimes planning boards override, uh, based on hardship? Um, so-
For that has to go to court, the, uh, the Board of Appeals.
Any hard-
See, the way something like that would work, if you plan board, uh, if somebody wants to do something, the planning board can approve, even if the planning board would like to do it. But the rule says you can't. The planning board says, we can't approve this. It goes to the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals looks for a way that they can approve it. Maybe they can, maybe they can't. And then if they can, then they will, they will, um, overrule it and tell the planning board to issue a permit. It's kind of, um, drawn out process. And I don't think we've had a Board of Appeals meeting in the nine years I've worked with the town of Cranberry Isles. But hey, you never know. But, but just a simple thing, I mean, you've got a rule that says, um, this. And then you say, but the planning board can override it. So it's, it's not a rule if it can be overridden, just take it out.
Um, I, I do think it's a little more than that. I do think it sends guidance. So if you make the rule that says, we're not going to do this. And then we say the planning board can override it. It gives teeth to the fact that we're really not in favor of these things as a town. But we can override it if circumstances truly warrant, as opposed to saying it's a free for all. You don't think there's a different, a nuanced difference there?
No.
Okay.
The core law.
We do have a motion on the table to remove the shoreline zone. It has been seconded. I think we need to vote on whether to remove that single clause from subsection D. Um, uh, are you in favor of removing the shoreline zone clause from zones and sat setbacks? Um, Lori?
I just want to understand when I'm voting, the reason that we're not going to go there with the shoreline is because that would require, uh, review or change of our shoreline zone before we, uh, are able to vote this ordinance in, in the interest of protection, we're doing it?
Uh, my understanding is Dennis said we'd have to rela- rewrite our, we would have to amend our shoreline ordinance. Number one, and number two, if this were in there, we wouldn't have the current internet service, uh, system that we do right now. Because it would all have been inside the shoreline zone. So those are the two reasons, um, that we, it was recommended to remove this. And so that's why I made that motion.
So I'll vote for removing it as long as there's no way to get around putting it in as, eh, eh, with an exception, just like we're accepting the distance from the houses. I, I don't see why-
We're all, we're only talking about the shoreline zone clause, the only that clause. We're not talking about the other clause. I made a motion on the table to remove that clause about the shoreline zone. And it was seconded and now we're going to vote on it.
But the point, can I just, the point to put it in in the first place was because of the, of the visibility factor and the, and the view and the, and the issue about the aesthetics. Is that correct? Or is it about wetland placement of in the wetlands and that's not advisable for a construction? Is it anything besides aesthetics? Because if it doesn't, that's covered already, like-
Joanne Thorman put that in, in my, I, I, I'm working on it. And I put it in for aesthetics, only aesthetics. And that's why I reread the original for that purpose is I didn't want anyone to think that that clause was ever there in any original.
I support your desire to try to do the aesthetic thing. Maybe we can do it some other way, that's all.
Okay, uh, we're going to vote. Bill, how do you vote? Do you vote to remove the shoreline clause from subsection D? Yes or no?
I vote no.
No, okay. Becca Powell, how do you vote? Yes or no?
Yes.
Uh, Philippe Donald, how do you vote? Yes or no?
Yes.
Lori Dobson, how do you vote? Yes or no?
I vote no.
Joanne Thorman, unfortunately to be tiebreaker, which is unfortunate, I will vote yes to remove it. Now, so that, uh, passes, uh, for now. Um, towers shall be setback from all property lines at a minimum distance equivalent to the total height of said tower. Um, that is a sentence we've already started talking about. And we talked about maybe adding a clause that exempts internet, the internet access project, the internet project or the town of Cranberry Isles. Can we have some thoughts on our motion on that, please? Philippe, standish yet.
Yeah, so we don't want to put an exemption in because it weakens the idea of it being a rule. Is that correct? I think Dennis said something along those lines.
Yes, that's what he's-
As it, as it's written now, we would basically, uh, w- we would be removing our own internet provider as it is now, like the, we, we would, the, we would have to have something like, instead of it being mounted on the boatyard, there would have to be a tower constructed somewhere in a property that allows for the tower's height to be, uh, that distance from its boundary.
Can we, could we add the word ideally so that we set parameters on wishes as opposed to rules? Or is that silly?
This is-
Um, which, tell me again, which, um, where this is in ordinance?
Could it-
Right in the draft?
Seven one D.
Seven one D.
One D.
Zones and setbacks, new or expanded wireless telecommunications facility or facility utilizes towers may not be located in the shoreline zone.
That's the mode, done.
Towers shall be setback from all property lines at a minimum distance equivalent to the total height of said tower. So that doesn't say anything about keeping it from building, so there's no problem there. Um, and we certainly, the existing towers, um, I hate to say grandfathered, but that's the term we always use. Do we have a provision in the ordinance to grandfather the existing towers?
Uh, repair and maintenance was covered.
Okay, that should cover it, um. So I don't, I mean, if, if it's passed that, uh, we want to, if you want to pass this the way it's written, that's, that's probably not going to, I mean, I don't, I don't foresee us having to move the tower at the boatyard on Great Cranberry because it's an existing-
Right.
It'd be illegally non-conforming existing structure. Question is, the, will this draft as written allow that? I mean, do existing str- are, are existing structures going to be, oh, be, um, grandfathered under this ordinance? And I, I don't remember seeing it in there. If it is, then there's no problem. I wouldn't have any problem with the towers being, you know, setbacks from a property line or that sort of thing. But you might, once again, increase your flexibility by saying that, uh, you could have an easement or, or, or a setback from a property line or an easement that would, uh, um, act as a setback. Should you see what I mean? I'd have to think about how to word it.
Let me, let me play devil's advocate on this. Supposing we remove this, we have no current inland zoning, um, beyond plumbing, uh, plumbing state code. So if Dennis, what is our current setback from property lines? So if I were to build a, uh, another, if I had enough acreage and I wanted to build a house uh, on, close to a property line, how far would I have to setback that house?
Well, a lot of people just build it right over the property line. But, uh, there, we, we don't have any setbacks from property lines, even in the shoreline zone.
Okay, so I'm going to play devil's advocate and I'm looking out my window. And without this clause, it means someone could smack a hundred foot tower right on my property line or within inches, correct?
Which is why there, there should be some kind of a setback thing there. And honestly, I think it's such a minor detail, we should just approve it as that, that setback part, part is written and move on.
Okay, I move that we accept the sentence as written. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Lori, seconds, okay. Any more discussion?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I like where this is going. I, I think we're on the right track because as we talked about before, under exceptions with maintenance and repair, it, it does include the reconstruction of wireless communications facilities. So we could reuse the tower on the boatyard or any of the other ones. It would just come down to if that tower was ever going to be moved anywhere else. We would have to go through this process and, and obey the, the setbacks.
Right, correct.
Okay. Or go to appeals. Um, okay, you say, we've been moved, I think.
I couldn't hear you.
I think it-
You were garbled.
Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, what'd you just say?
I said, or it could go to appeals as hardship. So I think this has been moved and seconded. So now, uh, Bill, are you in favor of this, that sentence? Towers shall be setback from all property lines at a minimum distance equivalent to the total height of said tower? Yes or no?
Yes.
Becca Powell, yes or no?
Yes.
Lori Dobson, yes or no?
Yes.
Philippe Donald, yes or no?
Yes.
Joanne Thorman, yes. Good, we've settled D. Moving on to E. Landscaping, a new wireless telecommunications facility. Oh, I want to read the original. And related equipment must be screened with plants from view by abutting properties to also be preserved to the maximum extent practical. I'm okay with that writing. Is everyone else okay with it? Lori?
Can I ask? Do, does that have any, uh, precedent in any other, uh, ordinance? Uh, I'm, I'm assuming you're patterning that on Al's head or did, did you change?
Al's head, okay. No, that's direct.
Did, has anyone seen landscaping, uh, spec- specifics anywhere else? Because I'm just, if, if they're going to have a hundred foot tower, there's no way you're going to get landscaping that's going to, you know, help that. And, and planting spruces isn't necessarily advisable in all cases. So I'm just wondering about the, the landscaping is tend- tends to be in there to protect, um, or to provide some, a- as I was understood it, it's there to provide some layer of, of, uh, teeth to an ordinance. But practically, how would that happen? I mean, if, if we're putting it in there to exclude the ability of anybody to put a tower in, that's, that's probably reasonable to ask for. But I'm unders- I'm trying to understand the, what, what the intent is to actually try to get somebody to put plants in there that are that deep. And they, they wouldn't have any, they wouldn't withstand the winds. I mean, it's not practicable. So I just don't understand it. Other than putting in a, 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 and, putting in something that's impossible to, to, to do practically.
It says to the maximum, maximum extent practicable.
Wow.
I don't think that's a word.
It is.
Practicable, practicable.
Practically applicable.
Yeah, do you want to know the difference between practical and practicable?
Yes.
Everyone knows what practical is. If, if it's, uh, practicable, pract- practicable is, is something that is not necessarily practical, but it's still worth doing. Ie, uh, kids rowing to school in a rowboat out to the islands. It's not practical, but it's practicable because it's kind of a good thing. That's the difference.
So I, I would like it to be practical because practicable ends up being a bad planting that could harm the tower and then cause more problems.
All right, practicable says able to be put, done or put into practice successfully.
Okay.
Meaning, meaning you're right, Lori, it's very, it's not able to be put in a, put in a hundred foot feet, a hundred foot tree to protect the neighbors. That is not able to be put into practice successfully. It's not reasonable.
So I would add, as a landscaper, I would add to protect and preserve sightlines, neighbors' sightlines. Direct sightlines, direct sightlines or something to that extent.
Uh, you need to make a motion then.
Well, Dennis wants to say something first.
Dennis, go ahead.
Okay, um, just, uh, based on what's, how Southwest Harbor deals with, this is called buffering. Okay, um, I think your intent here is to buffer the tower or the facilities, buildings, whatever from neighboring properties is a copacetic kind of thing. Um, and when Southwest Harbor and probably most towns, what they do is they do have a section in their land use ordinance about this buffering thing. And they do require either plantings or fence. Um, fence is okay or planting trees is okay. And they even get specific as to how big of a swi- of a strip you have to do, which we're not going to be able to get into today. Um, but so I, that's what you, I think what you're trying to get at here is you're buffering it, trying to just, even if you can't completely hide it, you're making it look a little nicer. Now, how you want to transpose that, I don't know.
Joanne?
Lori?
Um, since hi- hi- height cannot be cop- and you can't, unless you make it look, try to make it look like a tree, which I think is, those things are a mess anyway, because it's appealing and it's, it's just gross. So buffering is, uh, is a possibility, but the, the, the beauty of the islands is that if you leave it alone long enough, you'll get the, um, you'll get the ground cover that comes up on its own rather quickly. Uh, if it's undisturbed and the soil is undisturbed. So, so I would rather see, you know, rather than telling them to come in and plant things, which they'll do wrong. They won't maintain it, it'll die and look uglier than what nature would normally do faster, more effectively. I would just assume, say something about disturbing the existing vegetation to a, a minimum or something like that, if there's a way to say that. And, and then let nature help screen. It, it, it will on, on the islands here. Birches come in very quickly. The gray birches.
Um, anyone else? Um, anyone else? I wanted to see how you guys feel about the wording. To add a comma and add, and to preserve a visual buffer.
With existing vegetation.
Preserve or maintain a visual buffer.
Also with existing vegetation protected, is what I'm trying to say. Also while protecting existing vegetation. And also while protecting existing vegetation. That'll give you your best buffer. And also while protecting existing vegetation. I think that covers a lot. I think you, I've got that, that's got more teeth in it anyway. We can, we can protest that in the plan.
Anyone else have any thoughts?
Would you read the current motion, please?
Um, I don't think we have one on the table, do we, Ben? No, we don't have a motion on the table. Philippe, go ahead.
Myself, right there. That was my motion, is to add that. I, I move that we add, and while protecting existing vegetation. And well, protecting existing vegetation to the extent practicable. Or not, I don't care about that.
Could you hold off on the motion for a second?
Go ahead, Philippe.
Uh, could we just change the wording to, uh, a new wireless telecommunication facility and related equipment must be buffered from view by abutting properties?
Yeah. So that it can. Add to that.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Um, with indigenous vegetation or fence, if you wanna let them have a fence.
This is, fences require construction and that takes out vegetation, which will get taller than fences. That's why I'm saying with protection of.
Okay, I think we are in real danger of not finishing this today. And I am very, very.
Stand, because I put it forward. If it has a second, that would help a lot, I think, with natural vegetation, which we have here. What we need to do is protect the site from being despoiled while they're doing it. Come in, rip it up and leave, and then it takes forever to have the existing vegetation come out, come back in, you know?
Should we vote on this motion?
Can you second if you want, and then let it fall if you don't like it?
I'll second it.
Uh, Bill, second. Uh, are all those in favor? Lori, yes or no?
Yes.
That, Bill Dowling?
No.
Uh, Becca Powell?
Uh, no.
Philippe?
No.
Joanne, no. The motion dies. I move that we accept the wording as written for now. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bill Dowling, second. Although, any discussion?
Yes, what about what Philippe said? I think that was worth saying too. And I, was that a motion, Philippe? If it was, I'd support it.
Uh, I, I was just talking about it. I was hoping to get to, to a motion.
I didn't mean to exclude yours as a potential motion. I think it's worthy.
Um.
Okay. Uh, uh, there is, I, I think I made a motion to accept it as written. And I don't know if it's seconded. Is it seconded, Ben?
Yes.
Okay.
So we need to put yours down and then allow Philippe a chance to perform a motion? I think that's.
We are, we are in the discussion phase. And so what, now is a great time for Philippe to tell me his wording of, uh, what he would mo, move. And then we will be able to make an educated vote. Go ahead, Philippe.
Okay, so what we're talking about is creating a condition that visual sight will, will be impacted. Uh, somebody puts up a cell tower, the abutting property has a direct line of sight to it. We wanna say that you can't just put up a cell tower so that your neighbor has to look at it, correct? We wanna say that.
Yeah.
Uh, so we wanna have something in, in there. Um, the way it's, it's written right now says screened with plants from view, which means that they can only install plants. Or maybe they could have a plan to, um, let nature take its course and, and come back. I think that we should say that, uh, the related equipment, yada, yada, must be buffered from view by abutting properties and possibly to the extent possible. So that requires them to at least have some sort of plan to either create a fence, if that is a situation where that works, or to do landscaping, or to have a plan to let nature take its course. Be, but there should be something that says that they have to deal with the visual impact from an abutting property. And I think it should, should say, be buffered from view.
Okay, so perhaps a new wireless telecommunications facility and related equipment must be screened and buffered from view.
Visually buffered, he said. And I think that's an important distinction.
And then visually buffered from view with plants.
No, no, no.
No, just.
So buffer from view by abutting properties.
From abutting properties.
To the extent possible. Maybe, I don't know.
No, I think, I think it's good the way you put it. Visually protected from view from abutting properties.
Okay, great.
I second it.
And so do we, do we need that clause that says to also be preserved to the maximum extent practicable?
I don't think so. I think it weakens it in this case.
Uh, no, 'cause that, that talks about it, it, uh, being maintained over the course of time.
Okay, so, uh, the clause would lead as follows. Landscaping, a new wireless telecommunications facility and related equipment must be screened and visually buffered from view by a prop, by abutting properties, period.
You could add, Philippe, any, any new buffering materials need to be maintained?
Uh, I think that's covered on the second part, to be preserved to the maximum extent practicable. I think that we, we just, uh, as far as I understand what Dennis said with buffering in Southwest Harbor, that, that buffering is screening, correct? So it's redundant to say screened and buffered. We just wanna say buffered from view.
But I think maintaining in terms of watering or repairing or replacing.
That comes from the next sentence, to be preserved.
To be maintained and preserved, you know what I'm doing?
To also be preserved to the maximum extent.
Okay.
There you go. I like that. Preserve to maximum extent.
Yes, it already says that, so.
Okay, I'm gonna withdraw my motion and I'm gonna make a motion that reads as follows. And if I read it wrong, correct me in the middle of it. Landscaping, a new wireless telecommunications facility and related equipment must be screened and buffered from view by abutting properties to also be preserved to the maximum extent practicable.
Question, or a couple of things?
Yes.
One is, uh, just real simple, still call it landscaping. I call it buffering because it's really not landscaping, it's buffering. Um, and the way that's written, uh, with plants from view by abutting properties, sounds like it's the abutting property responsible to put the plants there. Look at that.
Must be screened with, and buffered from view.
Oh, yeah, by the, uh.
So, I can tell you how to word that.
Applicant?
How to get around that.
Okay, go ahead.
Abutting properties will be screened and buffered from view.
Yep, sounds good.
I wish I'd have, uh, looked at Southwest Harbor's buffering section of the land use ordinance. So that's really got some good, good stuff in it. No one pays attention to it, but anyway.
Southwest?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, uh, so the motion is, we, we don't really have to do motions on everything. Let's change the word from landscaping to buffering. Are we okay with that? Can I have a thumbs up?
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, the new wording would be a new wireless telecommunications facility and related equipment. Oh, I lost the wording because we were switching the order about abutting, no, abutting. Okay. Abutting.
Must be screened from abutting properties. Must be screened from view by abutting, oh, man.
View from abutting properties.
Yeah.
Yes.
From abutting, not by.
Right.
Okay, good, 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 good. Okay, buffering. A new wireless telecommunications facility and related equipment must be screened and buffered from view. Am I erasing with plants?
Yes.
From abutting properties. Are we okay with that? And I have a second.
Add to the maximum extent possible, practicable.
And also be preserved to the maximum extent practicable. I hate that word, but it's there. How about, okay. Do we, can I have a second?
Second.
Bill, second. Okay.
Second it, but that's okay.
Ben, do you feel like you have it sufficiently worded for you to follow the whole?
I'll follow your draft, because I think you've got it written down there.
Oh, oh, wow. Okay.
I've got the, uh, I'm, I'm keeping the motions in the.
Right.
But the actual language, I'm kinda deferring to you on that.
Okay. Buffering, a new wireless telecommunications facility and related equipment must be screened and buffered from you from view, from abutting.
Properties.
Properties. And and also be preserved to the maximum extent practicable.
You can take out also, and be preserved.
And be preserved. All right. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Um, okay. Uh, are you in favor, Bill Dowling?
I'm in favor, yes, aye.
Okay, Lori Dobson?
Yes.
Uh, Becca Powell?
Yes.
Philippe Donald?
Yes.
Joanne Thorman, yes. Okay. Good, fencing. A new wireless. A new wireless telecommunications facility must be fenced to discourage trespass on the facility and to discourage climbing on any structure by trespassers. I'm fine with that.
Me too.
Everyone else, thumbs up?
Wait a minute, could we just talk about what the materials are gonna be? Because if it's just gonna be a flimsy thing that could fall or not be maintained well. I mean, it just kinda, you wanna, whatever, fence is a wide open definition there.
Lori, if we follow your lead on every one of these clauses, I suspect we will not finish this. And I'm more concerned about finishing this. And much as I respect what you're saying here, I'm very concerned that we won't finish and it won't get to the selectmen.
What about chain link fence?
Yeah, chain link is fine.
But the way, the way it's wording, um, it would have to meet our approval. Uh, it, it's to discourage trespass and climbing. So if it's a.
All right.
You structure, they wouldn't do it.
I agree with you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Lori. Um, lighting, a new wireless telecommunications facility must be illuminated only as necessary to comply with FAA or other applicable state and federal requirements. However, security lighting may be used as long as it's shielded to be down directional to retain light within the boundaries of the site to the maximum extent practicable. I'm in fa, I'm okay with that.
Sounds good.
Uh, Philippe, thumbs up. Lori, thumbs up. Good. Structural standards, a new wireless telecommunications facility must comply with the current Electronic Industries Association Telecommunications Industries 222 Revision Standard entitled Structural Standards for Steel Antenna Towers and Antenna Supporting Structures. Provided such a thing still exists? I'm in favor of that. I would, can you add a, can you add a little question mark so make sure the lawyer looks into that, Ben? That still exists? I forget how old this ordinance, uh, by Owl's Head, it was written in 2009. So I just wanna make sure before we put that clause in, that that such a thing still exists. Uh, 7.2, standard conditions of approval. The following standard conditions of approval shall be part of any approval or conditional approval issued by the planning board where necessary to ensure that an approved project meets a criteria of this ordinance. The planning board can impose additional conditions of approval. Reference to the condition clearly noted of the final approval site plan and shall include. I really like that. Um, I don't know how you all feel, but I really like that. Thumbs up, down? Oh, did you lose me? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Thumbs up. Becca, thumbs up. Good. All right. The owner of the wireless telecommunications facility and his or her successors agree to respond in a timely, comprehensive manner to a request for information from a potential co-location applicant in exchange for a reasonable fee, not, not in excess of the actual cost of preparing a response. Two, negotiate in good faith for shared use of the wireless telecommunications facility by third parties. Three, allow shared use of the wireless telecommunications facility if an applicant agrees in writing to pay reasonable charges for co-location. Four, require no more than a reasonable charge for shared use of the wireless telecommunications facility uh, based on community rates and generally accepted accounting practices. This charge may include, but not limited to, a pro-rata share of the cost of site selection. Uh, blah, blah, blah. I'm gonna blah, blah, blah that. Um, that is all about co-location, which I assume we are all in favor of since the structure is already there, whatever structure that may be, and puts a criteria for co-location, which I think we're all very much in favor of co-location over a separate facility. So we okay with everything that was written there.
Yes.
Yes.
Good. B, upon the request by the town, the applicant shall certify compliance with all applicable FCC radio frequency emission regulations. Again, I believe that applies to co-location. Um. Okay. Section 8, amendment to an approved application. Any changes to an approved application must be approved by the planning board. I'm okay with that. Everybody thumbs up? Okay.
Yep.
Section 9, appeals. Any person agreed by a decision of the CEO or the planning board under this ordinance may appeal the decision to the Board of Appeals at an, as an administrative appeal under the zoning ordinance of the town of Cranberry Isles. Written notice of an appeal must be filed with the Board of Appeals within 30 days of the decision. The notice of appeal shall clearly state the reasons for the appeal. Okay, uh, Dennis, I'm gonna ask you real quick. This is how Owl's Head operates? Is it in line with how we operate?
Okay, can you run, run that by me again? I was trying to find, uh, the ordinance that goes beyond section 7, but wasn't unable to. So I wasn't listening intently. Could you just read it real quick again?
Sure. Any, I'm sorry, my internet appears unstable, so I apologize.
Oh, you're getting, you, you get some weird sounds, but it's working.
Any person aggrieved by a decision of the CEO or, or the planning board under this ordinance may appeal the decision to the Board of Appeals as an administrative appeal under the zoning ordinance of the town of Cranberry Isles. Written notice of an appeal must be filed with the Board of Appeals within 30 days of the decision. Then the notice of the appeal shall clearly state the reasons for the appeal.
Um, I would just say, um, in accordance with the land use, the, the, use the actual name of our land use ordinance. I believe it's, I believe it, well, that's right here. Uh, in accordance with the land use and shoreline zoning ordinance of the town of Cranberry Isles. And that's all you need to say because the rest of that is in there, tells you how to do it.
So it would.
All that.
So it would replace the words, under the zoning ordinance of the town of Cranberry Isles to, in accordance to, in accordance to, or of?
With.
With.
Yeah, so to, just re, replace the, uh, the term zoning ordinance with, uh, land use and shoreline zoning ordinance.
Land use and shoreline. Okay, great. All right, moving on. In carrying out its responsibilities under the tower ordinance, I'm not reading the original here. I think I should be reading the original. Cause I have some of my own wording there. Cause I have some of my own wording there. Response, this is section nine, in carrying out its responsibilities under the, and it's italicized, tower ordinance. Because that's what they called their ordinance was, the tower ordinance, but I'm not sure we're doing that. I think we're calling ours wireless telecommunications facilities. The Board of Appeals shall be governed by the provisions of Article One, General, Section 1.6 Board of Appeals of the Zoning Ordinance of the Tal- Town of Sap- Owl's Head. So we need to change that, Ben, to Board of Appeals shall be governed by the provisions of whatever article it is in our zoning ordinance that addresses appeals. Is that right, Dennis?
Yeah, that, that would, that would just change it from what Owl's Head does to what Cranbury Isles does. But it's the same procedure.
Okay. However, whenever there's found to be a conflict between the requirements of the Cranbury Isles zoning ordinance and this this, uh, telecommunications ordinance, the more severe requirement, as judged against the interest of the appellant, shall apply. So it's basically saying if they, if they conflict in any way, the stricter rules apply. Is that, did I read that correctly?
Yes.
I'm okay with that, or you guys all okay with that? The Board of Appeals shall, shall hear matters on an appellate basis. The Board of Appeals may reverse the decision of the CEO or the planning board upon, only upon a finding that the decision was clearly contrary to specific provisions of this ordinance. Is that appropriate, Dennis?
That sounds good, and the attorney will find out if it's not.
Okay. Um. The CEO, uh, section ten, the CEO shall enforce this ordinance. If the CEO finds that any provision of this ordinance has been violated, the CEO shall notify in writing the person responsible for such violation. Indicating the nature of the violation and ordering the action necessary to correct it, the CEO shall order correction of the violation and may take any other legal action to ensure compliance with this ordinance. Does that seem like it's? Okay.
I just was wondering, um, does it have, has been violated, or could you say because it hasn't been validated yet? Potentially violated, or is that, at that point, when you, you tell them that, Dennis, that's, that's a decision that's been made that it is in violation? You don't tell them ahead of that?
Well, you mean, should we warn them if we think they're heading down the road to a violation?
Yeah, I'm wondering, potentially violated or something?
Yeah, I, I, I think that, I, that's, it's a good idea, and we'll always watch out for that, and I'm always gonna try to warn someone before they step in it. But we really, under, as far as enforcement goes, we don't enforce until there's been a violation.
All right, all right, so it's already.
Always have to let them know first.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good to know. Okay, penalties. Any person who owns or controls any building or property violates this ordinance shall be fined in accordance with Title 30-A, Section 4452. Each day such violation continues after notification by the CEO shall continue, constitute a separate offense. Sounds, uh, appropriate to me, Dennis. Yeah, uh, your feedback?
Can you reread that again?
Any person who owns or controls any building or property that violates this ordinance shall be fined in accordance with Title 30-A, MRSA, Section 4452. Each day such violation. Can you hear me okay? Cause I keep getting notices, my internet's no good.
You can hear you.
Each day such violation continues after notification by the CEO shall constitute a separate offense.
Um, penalties are assessed on a day-by-day basis. Yeah, um, yeah, that, that's fine. I mean, there's a better way to word it, but in the interest of time, that'll do the trick. I, I would word it exactly the way the statute does, but let's, let's move on, that'll do the trick.
Okay, I'm gonna, um, move past section twelve, cause I think the attorney will be snagging any of this stuff, and go right to definitions. Um. And that will be the end, because I thought that is uh, the effective time and date, and that would be, we can't address that until it's actually happened and passed. So, they, these are all definitions that are used in the ordinance, so, uh, and then we'll be done. And just as a matter of protocol, I did send an email to the selectmen and Denise and Jim that says the following, and Ben. The planning board is working diligently on a draft for the cell tower ordinance, in the hopes of finishing a draft early next week. We hope the selectmen will have it in their hands shortly thereafter for review and then action at the next selectman's meeting. Ideally, it would be great if the town attorney could review it simultaneously for any required or suggested edits so that we, as a town, can act fairly quickly to pass or not a new ordinance. When and how can the town vote on this, question mark? It seems that time is of the essence. Selectmen or Jim, please respond with any thoughts or suggestions, and I will share with the planning board at our next meeting. Let me know if this approach and timetable seems appropriate. And I did not get a response.
Did you send that out, Joanne?
That was sent June 24th at 10:39 AM.
I got it.
Okay, okay, all right. I thought it was more recent.
You didn't get a, a response of any kind, acknowledgement of receipt or anything?
No. And to be clear, Ben, I don't think that was your responsibility. I specifically asked the selectmen and or Jim to let me know if what I was saying was, um, uh, fitting with their timetable or plan. So, continuing on, I just wanted to let you guys know that I did contact the planning board to talk about the, the selectmen, to talk about what we were doing and our timetable. So, definitions.
Good question, Joanne.
Yes.
Were you looking to a specific date? I mean, you hoping for this to go forward at a certain time?
I would, I was hoping that, um, my thinking is ASAP. We've had more than one overture about, uh, cell tower in the Town of Cranbury Isles.
Should we follow it up then?
What?
Our concern that we haven't been, you know, not having heard, but the, the, the planning board has expressly requested, uh, a response.
Well, I'm assuming that Ben, this is my hope, that Ben is gonna finish typing up the draft, he's gonna hand it over to Jim and the selectmen, have them look it over, and simultaneously, my hope is that Jim and the selectmen will say, please, Ben, send it off to the attorney for him to look it over so that they can talk about it at the next selectman's meeting, which is, I assume, in the beginning of July. And then they will make a decision on how we go about, as a town, in the middle of a pandemic, passing or not passing an ordinance. And I don't, that is outside the scope of this, this body's, um, Dennis, and then Ben.
And Liz first.
Now, Ben, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, Joanne, I will, uh, pending you, uh, you all make the approval today of, of, of the draft. I will, uh, and I'll copy you on the email. I'll make sure there isn't an agenda item that should be included on the selectman's meeting for next week.
Okay.
Has been put together, and, and I will, uh, I'll send that out and copy you on it.
Thank you.
So there's an agenda item regarding this ordinance.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Dennis.
Yeah, just, I would just say, as, you know, as the chairman of the, of the planning board, or, or myself, either or, traditionally it's been me. Don't be afraid to pick up the phone and call the selectman. I, is Richard Beal still the, imagine he's still the chief selectman? Uh, but I mean, a phone call is always great, like right after being, hey, Richard, here's what we, uh, here's what we talked about, and here's why it's so very important. Um, but the, keep a dialogue as you're going, and that's, uh, there are times when the two-way conversation is still the way to go. Um, my next question, okay, next question, are, are we, are we at the end of the, um, reviewing the tower ordinance?
We are, except for the definitions, and I don't know if definitions are going to. For instance, there's a definition in here called communications antenna area. That clearly needs to be removed. So, because we don't have one, so it shouldn't be in this definitions.
Well, I, I don't know, I mean, you could leave it. You could either or, um. Might be best to remove it for clarity, but, uh, in the, in the future, you may want to have a designated tower area, although I'm not sure how that would work out there.
Why not leave it?
Okay, uh, so we're gonna take a little bit different approach. If you all have it in front of you, um, there's about twelve definitions in here, and, um, take a glance over and see if there's any that you think need some, um, attention. Um, historic district and historic landmark are in there and defined? My concern is, if we have these definitions in here, but not in the ordinance, do we lose teeth rather than gain them? Because we've, we don't have designated historic districts. We don't have designated historic landmarks. We have landmarks that are historic, but they're not designated, so.
Actually, we, we do. I mean, the State Historic Preservation Office, um, may have registered landmarks, and then the state has certain areas, you know, mostly it's habitat related. Uh, but there are designated areas now, as long as we're not specifying who's designating them, we should be okay, but I'm sure there's some places out there the state has on their historic list, you know, probably the park.
I think, I think, uh, I, we covered this a little bit. There are three historic sites recognized by the Fed right now.
There you go.
The Baker Island Light and the Bear Island Light. There are thirty-two shipwrecks, I believe, recognized by the state. And twelve known prehistoric sites. Um, three of which are historically significant.
Exactly. Are you talking about geological structures?
Uh, prehistoric sites, them Shellminds. Um, I guess the point being is, I just wasn't sure if we wanted those definitions in there, if we're not actually designated scenic resource. So if we want to talk in our ordinance about preserving viewpoints and scenic landmarks, and yet they define them as designated, yet this town doesn't have designated, are we removing the teeth of our ordinance by including that definition?
Can you remove the term designated?
I'm very happy to do that.
Yeah, let's just do that.
Are we all okay with?
Prehistoric is included in historic.
Thumbs up, please.
Is prehistoric conclude, included in historic?
Thumbs up. Joanne? Frozen? Am I frozen?
Definition and question, is prehistoric included in historic? Cause I can think of a location of Shellminds that would be a very important place to preserve.
There are, there are twelve known prehistoric sites. But they are not designated. To the best of my knowledge, cause I looked at that in the comprehensive plan. These things need to be designated in the comprehensive plan, and, uh, they have not, or the town needs to act on the ones that are mentioned in the comprehensive plan.
Can we also say, including prehistoric? Just to make sure that nobody can say that's not historic. Does that matter? Cause that, that will, that will affect, uh, the location.
I would think historic includes prehistoric as well.
Yes, I, I would say that it's redundant, but.
Right, just wanna make sure.
Um, is there any other definition? We, the only change we've made so far um, is to cross out the word designated. And I'm not sure I have a consensus on communications antenna area. I would like to remove that. I, and, and I, I, because that refers to nothing that's in the teeth of the ordinance, so. Are you okay with me, with it being removed, the communications antenna area? If we create one later on, we will add it. Good, okay, that's go, that's gone. Is there any other definition that concerns you, that you would, or that you would like to address? Good. I think that we have covered every aspect of this ordinance. Is there any other questions or concerns? I've read you the email, so the idea is Ben would finish typing this draft. And wait, you know, on the, the completed draft to all of you in advance so that you see it, cause we will not be meeting before the selectman's meeting. Uh, Lori?
Uh, yeah, I just, uh, I just have a final comment. I think seventy-five was what Dennis had said. Um, my phone died at that unfortunate point last time. And, um, and I still would hold with the seventy-five foot height, but, um, you know, I, I recognize that decisions were made after my phone died, so.
Uh, Lori, the reason that decision was made is a hundred feet had quite a bit of precedence in other ordinances.
Okay.
We, we, we didn't want to be arbitrary. There was a concern about arbitrary numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Um, because I think that we will be ready to adjourn unless anybody has any other comments with reference to the how we go forward with this, Dennis?
Yeah, just. This isn't the ordinance, but I wanna make sure that the planning board, and I can't remember, I know we voted on one, is the planning board wants to bring, we have two, um, two proposed changes to the shoreline zoning ordinance. One, the split districts, I think you have agreed to uh, recommend to the selectmen, and I don't remember the one about the photo requirement for construction applications in the shoreline zone. I don't remember if we had voted to, if you had voted to, um, recommend that, but it's a state law, so we should.
Yeah, I think we talked about it, I think we voted on it, and I think we were all in favor of it. So there were two changes to the shoreline. The second one about the split districts, you got approval for that, w- w- writing, that wording. So I'm hoping that will go to selectmen, cause it already went through us and we were okay with it. So, in, in synopsis, Ben, there are three items that are going before the selectmen, and that are need to get voted on. Right?
Yes.
Good, okay. Any more comments before we adjourn today? Thank you all.
Um, I, I, I would appreciate if you all would, would, uh, move and vote on the draft document that you have, the, the ordinance itself.
You mean, as amended verbally, as we've discussed it today?
Yes.
Right, I'll, I'll move that we do.
Okay, Lori makes a motion, and Joanne Thorman will second it. Base, and discussion is basically all the work we've done today that we're letting them know that we're all in favor of the entire document as we've worked on it. You will receive.
Also, my motion should, should mention that we're just excluding the tower from, from reference.
No, only, only up or down on this draft as made.
All right.
Um, so, and so we're in the discussion phase. Basically, I'm letting you know that when Ben is finished typing this, you will all receive a complete draft whenever he's done, and thank you, Ben. I know it's not easy to retype a whole document.
Thank you.
And so you will all see this in advance, and so if you get the email and you have thoughts or comments, you need to reply all, and you need to CC, uh, Denise and Ben on it, um, because it is a matter of public record. So, it, it has been moved, it's been accepted. Dennis, what?
Well, go continue and take care of that, and I just have a simple question. It's, it's not gonna affect what you're working on, talking about right now.
Okay, all those favor, Dobson?
Aye.
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Uh, Bill, Bill, aye. Becca?
Aye.
Aye.
Philippe?
Aye.
Uh, Joanne votes aye. Just so you all know, I'm getting a new router, uh, any day now, because I, I can't handle this router anymore, so.
Yeah, I, 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 yeah, it's hard to hear you, and so that's great. And then the other thing is, you, if you do talk to, uh, any of the, uh, uh, selectmen, I don't know if that's gonna comport with what we're supposed to do, keeping things public, but at least you could CC us, uh, or, or include us in what the discussion was, that would be. or include us in what the discussion was, that would be fine with me.
Okay, um, I I hear you, I I haven't had any discussions. Um, uh, so it's all, Dennis, you had one more comment, because this has been.
Do the selectmen know that this outfit in Portland, Oregon has contacted us twice, and now that they're asking if the town wants to lease them property to put a tower? Because I I've seen that we've received that, and Denise sent it back to me as a point of contact, do the selectmen know this?
I have no idea, Ben?
I don't have any knowledge either.
It's kind of important.
Yeah, I know, but I don't know, I would assume that it would be, it would be the town clerk's responsibility to share those communications.
Okay, yeah, dude, I just wondered, because no one was info, it's just Denise had passed that to that company, my POC, me as POC, but they already know that, and what, just, I don't, the rest of you don't know, um, basically, it's an outfit in Portland, Oregon, they contacted me, I think, in the fall or early winter last year. I'm asking, and I spoke with them on the phone, and said, no, we don't have an ordinance. I said, oh, that's pretty cool, well, we'll be getting in touch with it, yeah, okay, so I immediately got this thing going about getting an ordinance. They've since emailed or talked to, I guess, Denise, and asked if the town would be interested in leasing property to build a cell tower. I think they're looking at great cranberry. Or do they know of any, uh, private property that would be interested in leasing it to them? And then the last I know is Denise gave them me as a point of contact, which they already have. Um, I just think it would be good if the selectmen knew that, and the other other thing being, the selectman's meeting, I I take it, um, is going to be on the first Tuesday of July, which is the seventh, or is that changed to the weekend or anything, you know?
It'll be, it'll be on the second, the seventh, I'm sorry, the.
Okay, and so this, does that, does that get, so there's no agenda probably yet, so we still have time to get this on that agenda?
Yes, it's got, the agenda is supposed to be posted today, and since this is approved, I'm gonna forward that on to make sure that they know that this would be included on the agenda.
Okay, and I will get you that little list, little typos, I will email that to you.
Appreciate that.
We're done here, um, and and so, and I would, that will probably a Zoom meeting?
No, it's video, it's video, it's, uh, it's that audio machine, and it's very, very diff, it's a difficult.
I mean, can people go to the meeting?
Oh, yes.
Oh, you can physically have a meeting now?
Oh, I don't know about that, Ben, Ben, can people physically go to the meeting?
I would say Dennis is, there there, the, there are people meeting. Um, it's in the town office, there's distancing things and all that involved, I would, uh, uh, I don't know if I will be there, or if I'll be doing my phone like I did last month, I'm not sure, they've not, I've not heard any uh, direction on that, or they'll move it. I don't think it'll be in the neighborhood house, so I'm I'm pretty sure it'll still be in the town office.
Yeah, I'm just, just.
Basically, the town office is open.
Okay, just as far as for the, um, the planning board is concerned, they're just, if they're, if they are allowing people, I'm gonna go ahead and call Richard Beal and just kind of let him know what's going on, just to make sure they know about it. And I'm planning to go and sponsor my two preferred changes to the land use ordinance. Joanne, if you're comfortable, it would be a great idea for you to come represent the planning board, if not, I can do that, I've always done that before.
I would, I would like to go, but I would also like it to be, if it's, since it's a summer meeting, I also think it would be a good idea that it be at the neighborhood house and not in the town office.
Well, the problem is the neighborhood house is closed.
Yeah. Probably a COVID thing.
The neighborhood house is has closed all events, I don't think they would let us, actually.
Would they let us have it outside? Anyway, this is, this is minutia that is not really, I I will think about it, Dennis, I will.
Do you show up like protesters? Last night, yeah. Okay.
Lori, sorry.
I think it's pretty important that 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 you communicate with Richard Beal uh, to get at least a verbal, to know that that he's he's registering what you're saying and how important it is to move forward on this, because I think it's important for the selectmen to make people aware, um, the public aware residents that that we've had this interest, and that we're actively putting forward a uh, I'm sorry, I lost you, can you hear me still?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I lost your screen, well, just to say that I think it's important that 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 the the selectmen, I think, have a duty to let people know that we've been approached and that that we are proceeding post haste to put an ordinance together, I think that's really, uh, it should be a requirement, they, you should impress upon them that we think that's really important, that they let everybody know, we, the last thing we want is for people to think, oh, well, we don't have an ordinance, somebody's approached them with some money, they might as well go ahead and, and then find out after the fact that we were trying to put something together.
This is the reason why I sent my thoughts in an email rather than a phone call. I agree with you, Dennis, about, you know, phone calls and the exchanges, but I also think a written record is a wonderful thing.
A phone call followed by an email doesn't hurt.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
Okay, um, so at this juncture, I move that we adjourn, do I have a second?
Just before you adjourn, um, Dennis, will you make sure, and Ben, will you make sure that the selectmen, select board know that we have been approached three times by the same outfit? Um, so that, so that some urgency is attached to this process?
Yeah, sure, um, no, no problem, and I actually have a few things about Nance that I need to run by Richard too, and try to get back on track for that, so I I need.
Okay. Great, I think, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Um, okay, all those in favor of adjourning, Lori Dobson?
Yes, I'm trying to skip back to my screen, but yes.
Bill Dowling?
Yes.
Becca Powell?
Yes.
Philippe Donald?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, Joanne Thorman, yes, thank you, everybody, for all your hard work, uh, Ben, I'll send it to you.
Good job on the work.
Good job.